Good evening, everyone. We're certainly happy to have all of you here. Before we begin, we always start with prayer. We ask you to bow your heads, please. Eternal God, our Father, we thank you for your many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for all our constituents that are here today. We ask you to continue to bless this city and all our citizens and keep us healthy and safe. And, Lord, we ask you to give us, the City Council, divine guidance as we make decisions to further our city. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our first item is consideration of March the 5th, 2024 City Council minutes.
Motion for passage.
Motion has been made by Councilman Strowman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kalu. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. The motion is carried. We are just so sad today that one of our good employees is retiring. And we're going to ask Lieutenant Jennifer A. Hague and her husband and her family to come forward as we ask Mr. Everett coming, we come to.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, all of our guests in person and virtually. We've come to another one of those very bittersweet moments, if you will, where we get to acknowledge and recognize and appreciate one of Orangeburg's finest. And Lieutenant Jennifer Hague has faithfully served the city of Orangeburg for 25 years and 10 months. It goes without saying that we are so very appreciative of all the work and dedication that you've shown the citizens of the city of Orangeburg. Not only you, but your family, I know, have been with you from day one, and we, again, are so appreciative. I'm going to take a moment and step aside and ask Chief Austin to come forward and share a few words on behalf of the DPS family about you, if you will.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Everett, Mr. Mayor, members of council. There's a backstory behind Lieutenant Hague and me in terms of a meeting we had about 30-plus years ago. I was at that time serving in another capacity about 40 miles from here. And as I was coming out of the lizard's thicket, I met this bouncy young lady, energetic and enthusiastic, and she said to me, "I'm a student at the University of South Carolina. When I graduate, I'm going to come to work for you." Well, she came to Orangeburg, came home to Orangeburg, and joined the police department here at Public Safety. So here we are 30 years later, and I've said to Jennifer, "Now you're leaving me." But she has been great to call a colleague. Just having her present has been a very reassuring process. She's a very bright young lady, takes her job super seriously. And as Stuart and I have shared in our conversations about her, there is virtually nothing that you can ask her to do that she won't give 100%. And so we're just excited for her, but saddened that she's going to be leaving. But she's leaving with a "I'll be seeing you," so we look forward to that. But after 25 years, 10 months, 14 days of dedicated service, we want to bid our colleague farewell for now, for her retirement, and with hopes that we'll be seeing you along the way. Now, if I can stop there before I do start.
Jennifer, whereas the, you have faithfully served the city of Orangeburg for 25 years, 10 months, and 14 days with the retirement date of March the 1st, 2024. And it says, "Whereas she through her long and faithful service contributed greatly to the successful operation of the city of Orangeburg. And whereas the city of Orangeburg, in recognition of the fine contributions you have rendered to the city of Orangeburg, wants to inscribe on record of its appreciation to you and the entire City Council." And we want to say now therefore be resolved that the mayor, members of City Councils, and City Assembly do officially recognize the faithful service and you rendered to the city of Orangeburg in the capacity in which you have served and take pride in committing your job well done. And to say, be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution in appreciation of your devotion and duty to the city of Orangeburg be placed in the minute book, and a copy be furnished to you in recognition of for your services. Passed by the City Council, City of Orangeburg, State of South Carolina, on the 19th day, March 24th. This is to you, and God bless you. Look this way. Okay. And this is in recognition to you from the city of Orangeburg, and we want to say, enjoy.
Thank you.
Okay? And Jennifer, we're going to have you to say something.
And Mayor, and Council, we have one more item that we want to present.
I'm going to ask Battalion Chief Winonham if he would come for this next presentation. The fire service has a tradition during which the retiree is presented with a ceremonial axe.
In the realm of firefighting, that stands as a powerful emblem of strength, courage, resilience, utilized by firefighters throughout the ages. Employed to dismantle obstacles and to facilitate rescue of those imperiled by flames, firefighters wield their axes with precision and determination. Emblematic of readiness at a moment's notice, the axe is but one among, one among the cadre of implements embodying the ethos of preparedness. These implements feature predominantly on colored insignias, fire department seals, badges, and other emblems. On behalf of the fire department, presenting you your ceremonial.
Jennifer, would you like to say something? Y'all hold an axe for that axe.
Well, I was okay until I saw that. I get one reason that means so much, and a lot of people don't realize on me. I've been a police officer for a long time, but the fireside was actually my first love. That's what first got me around everything. That's what I loved doing for so long, and it just kind of went along the wayside. So seeing that, yeah, there's nothing like driving a fire truck. That's all I got to say. That's some of the best memories I have. But I just want to say thank you. Thank you for all the support over the years. I've known many of y'all for a long time, and it's great to see you again. And I just appreciate all the support over the years. And for Public Safety, I came back home because it's where I wanted to work. I did my internship summer before I graduated, and it's where I wanted to be. And for all the times I thought, "Oh, I gotta go, I gotta go somewhere," it always kept me here. So I really appreciate it. I appreciate the family. I got, my real family came from here, so that's probably the best of anything I ever could have had. So thank you again. I appreciate everything. Thank you.
We have some appearances. We have a lot of appearances tonight, so we're going to ask you all to please be mindful of the time. Each one of you have five minutes, and please govern your speeches accordingly. At this time, we're going to have the Midland Fatherhood Coalition come. Ms. Eleanor Drea Boyd, if she would come and present. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you so much for allowing us to come and present this evening. I have my colleagues with me, Mr. Keith Ivy. He is the Director of Programs who will kick us off. Mr. Andrew Costin, who's our Data Quality Manager. And for allowing us three to do this, Ms. Angela McDuffie, she is the CEO of Midland's Fatherhood Coalition. So without further ado, since we have the clock ticking, go ahead, Steve.
Greetings to you, Council, Mayor, and City Manager and Administration. We are Midland's Fatherhood Coalition, and we're here to talk to you about our organization. So we're going to jump right on in. Can you jump to the next slide? Our mission: To engage fathers in positive support of the children and to enhance the support of fatherhood throughout the Midlands. Our vision: Children have brighter futures and for communities to be stronger and safer. Next slide. Community safety, wellness, economic mobility. And this is the impact. School readiness improves 33% likely to repeat a grade. Self-esteem improves. Teens are likely to stay in school. Next slide. Mental health improves. Better problem solvers, more confident and empathetic. Economic stability improves. Children from absent-father homes, three times more likely to be living in poverty. Next slide. Community safety improves. That's, oh, okay. Next slide. Program overview, free services that we provide. Each week at our organizations throughout the Midlands, we provide peer group sessions where the fathers are able to come together, talk about our topics, and really vent and get some things off their chest, which is really therapeutic. One-man-plan individual goal-setting forums that we use for our fathers. Each of one of our fathers that comes into our programs has goals that they need to be set to improve their situation. Next. Case management. Each participant has an intervention specialist that adheres to their needs on a weekly, monthly basis. Next slide. Workforce development, job placement. Many of our fathers come to us unemployed or underemployed. That's a problem. So that's where we help them with their resume building. We help them with skills throughout our programs and have other partners that we utilize to help them find gainful employment. Next slide. Father-child activities. We sponsor father-child events throughout the year to help those fathers to bond better with their children, help them understand what their children likes, dislikes. Next slide. Total number, total number of participants. I'm going to slide, I'm going to step back.
So I'm Andrew Costin. I'm the Data and Quality Manager, so I'm the numbers guy. So total number served across all three of our sites in Lexington, Richland, and Sumter last year was 399 fathers. And out of those 399 fathers, if you would, total number of children positively impacted was 997. So almost 1,000 children across Lexington, Richland, and Sumter have been positively impacted, just within the last year from what we've done. If you would, next slide. So a lot of questions that we get are, "How do dads find us?" The main ways are self-referrals. We get a lot of referrals from DSS, Family Court, probation, pardon, and parole. We have a lot of community partners in different agencies, law enforcement, healthcare providers. There are a lot of different avenues that people take to get to us. But when they come to us, what we're really looking for is, if they're coming from DSS, we want them to be reunited with their children. And, thank you very much. If they're seeking any furthering in their education, we want them to get their GED or job skills training. We want them to get employment, which we have really specialized in over the past number of years. And we want to improve their co-parenting relationship. But on top of that, we also want to improve their relationship with their children. Really, anything they need, we provide. And that's what we try to be for these parents. And I'll hand it over to Ms. Eleanor.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So why are we here in Orangeburg? Isn't it wonderful to be part of an organization that can impact families, make your community safer, and ensure brighter futures for children? And we want to do that here in Orangeburg. We're so excited. Let me tell you what we're doing and what we would hope to do. This year, we are going to open an office in the Rural Health Family Resource Center. That's going to be starting very soon. We already have a spot picked out there. Currently, we have staff who are attending Family Court on a monthly basis. A lot of the fathers that we serve come through us from Family Court referrals. The other goal that we have is to secure funding so that we can open and fully staff our site to the tune of about $322,000. And our goal is to have a full-service site opening in 2025. Our time is up. I'm going to hand out some folders with detailed information. In the meantime, please let us know if you have any questions.
Do y'all have any questions? Anybody have any questions?
Not a question, Mayor.
Thank you.
I'm happy to see you opening an office because there are so many fatherless children that we are in contact with, and we would love to kind of partner with you. I run a nonprofit, an after-school program for children here in Orangeburg, and we would love to see more children connecting with their parents. So we will definitely be in touch with you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you all for coming.
Okay. Thank you so much for having us.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
At this time, we will have Mr. Cecil Williams come to give us remarks regarding the South Carolina Civil Rights Museum.
Good evening.
Good evening.
City Councilpersons, Mayor, City Administrator, ladies and gentlemen, citizens of Orangeburg, and I have Mayor, President Warmack back here as well to say hello to. I have come here this evening to share some good news with you. About five years ago, and I'm coming to you this time, I made an appearance before the County Council a few weeks back, but I wanted to share some good news with Orangeburg about something that is happening. It was about five years ago. My wife, Barbara, who's sitting in the audience, my sister Brenda, who is deceased, we tried to establish something that was, again, almost an impossible task. But I'm here to share the good news, the fact that we did make this happen. Five years ago, noting that the states of South Carolina and Florida, where two of the 16 southern states in the United States, did not have a civil rights museum, a time in history when America was able to put some legitimacy to, again, the Fourteenth Amendment and the Constitution of the United States, and to say thank you for the people whose shoulders we stand on today, people who, again, made jobs possible, made democracy in America possible, made the advances we had. The Civil Rights Movement period, which took place between 1950 and 1970, brought all those changes on. And then, of course, the passage of the Civil Rights Acts, the Voting Rights Acts, and other acts came as a result, again, the Civil Rights Movement. And people in Orangeburg played a very important role. But generally, South Carolina is almost never, ever putting the spotlight as being a place where these great changes had its origin. So again, my wife, my sister and I, we started five years ago, in fact, March or April in 2019. We pooled together a small amount of our resources, and I had plenty of artifacts, photographs, and documents. And we did something, and in the words of my mother, who, when I was growing up here in Orangeburg, and I'm a lifetime resident of Orangeburg, my mother used to commonly say to me, when I tried to do something impossible or tried to do something that was, you know, way beyond my possibilities or means, she said, "Boy, you always trying to do something too big for your britches." So anyway, this was a job of starting a civil rights movement museum in the state of South Carolina that was really a little too big for my britches, but I tried to do it anyway. But I'm here to share the good news that we did it. As you know, in Orangeburg, between Columbia and Charleston, at exit 145, 149, and 154, five years ago, an MIT study provided evidence that 100,000 cars pass Orangeburg between Columbia and Charleston daily. Okay, take away 30,000 trucks, but anyway, a lot of traffic on the highway coming to Orangeburg. We're happy to announce that, again, since we started the Civil Rights Movement Museum five years ago, we have had approximately 30,000 people coming into the city of Orangeburg who stopped by Orangeburg, and they buy gas, they go to restaurants, they see our beautiful campuses. We expose, again, the city of Orangeburg as a place where, again, not only were we a major player in the American Civil Rights Movement, we're coming to find out that Orangeburg and counties like Clarendon County and Talon and Summerden, we were at the catalyst of the American Civil Rights Movement period. And we want to get that news around. We're beginning to prove that. We're beginning to bring out the evidence. We're beginning to share that. And it's going, it's happening very, very quickly. And but we really stopped by today just to say thank you, Orangeburg, for letting us be a part of this, and thank you for your support, and we look forward to even more support from you, hopefully. And as a kind of evidence of, I don't have an axe. I wish I had one of those axes. That was given a few minutes ago, but I don't have an axe, though. But I would like, would you mind holding this on, sir? Just to kind of share you some idea of the people that are coming to Orangeburg. Please, when we get a group into our museum, we take a group picture. And so here are some of the thousands of people that have come into our city, that have come to visit our museum that we share. And we're going to continue to kick the can down the road on some of that museum we have. We're beginning to get all kinds of artifacts that are historically significant. And we, even though we are a small museum, would you mind?
Your time is up. Your time is up.
But we're beginning to get some very historic, significant artifacts in our museum that have no value on them. For example, when the Briggs case took place some 69 years ago, now seven years coming up with May 17th, 1954, is the seventh anniversary. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Coming up, we have even got what is called the Briggs Bible, which is a very valuable document, and those are some of the things we share. So I just want to say thank you very much, Orangeburg, and thank you for letting me be here tonight.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Williams. At this time, we're going to have Mr. Henry, I'm not going to call you last name because I don't want to mess it up. His concerns, City of Orangeburg Soccer Program Maintenance and City of Orangeburg. If you come and state your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Mr. Henry Idiazu.
Okay.
I'm the president of Orangeburg. Mr. Mayor, City Council members, all other protocols observed. I'm here to speak about advocacy for soccer in Orangeburg. And just to give an overview, soccer is the biggest sport in the world. In 1994, the United States hosted soccer, and it brought a lot of diversity, it brought a lot of awareness. The city of Orangeburg and the county of Orangeburg have become a part of that. I played soccer here from '94 to '96. There was a team called Orangeburg FC. Any of you who knows Guido, that runs their GNC store in the mall, we played together. Fast forward to today, there was a soccer league that happens in the fall here, and I have come to speak on behalf of the parents who feel disconnected with regards to city leaders who don't even know that something like that is going on. Soccer could be an IGR. And what is an IGR? An IGR is an internal generated revenue for the city of Orangeburg and for the county as well. The awareness from the West Coast to the northern part of the East Coast, we can go on record to look at such things. The finals of the 2022 Soccer World Cup had 4.5 billion people watching in one day. If you combine the NBA Finals, the Major League, NBA, Major League, NFL, all together in the next couple of years, it would not even go close to those numbers. Where is Orangeburg? Where is Orangeburg County today? The parents there feel disconnected, that the leaders don't even know, don't even pay attention to that. And we ask ourselves, there's a great facility that was built behind OP. I wasn't in the city, I wasn't in the country when that was built, because I would have asked a lot of questions. Why don't we build a one-stop-shop place as opposed to the silos that we have today? Hillcrest is a silo. You have a fantastic, beautiful facility there that is underserved. Sean is here, he can testify to that. We play, my children play in the All-Star game in Beaufort. That is a huge IGR generator for that area. The city of Orangeburg can do that. The county of Orangeburg can key into that. We feel disconnected as well. There is no safety when the soccer season is on. Not one single law enforcement officer comes over there. When you have football and soccer practices together, the sign says, "No narcotics, no smoking, nothing." You have individuals there smoking what you don't know. And we, the parents, the soccer parents, we just keep mute, and we pray for our safety. We would like all of these addressed. Access to the chief of police here is close to none. If you call that office, they will query you and query you and query you. If you leave in the city, you should have access to your chief of police. Concerning safety, December 29th, 2023, I experienced seven traffic light violations. People running the lights. Orangeburg has become the city where people come and do what they like and leave. Ladies and gentlemen, it shouldn't be so. Our leaders here, there's a disconnect somewhere. Let's remove our nice clothing, get spotty, come to the soccer ground, and engage. I speak as an advocate for some of these parents who feel that if the electorate is expanded, the diversity in Orangeburg will be felt. Right now, they don't feel it. We don't know what soccer can bring for the city and this county. If we need the numbers, I'll be glad to provide the numbers. 4.5 billion people watched the 2022 World Cup Finals. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for him?
Yeah. Harry.
Okay. His time is up, Dr. His time. Your time is up. He just.
You going to make comments?
There's a comment.
He's just going to make comments.
You are the current president of the Boys' Soccer Club, right?
No, this is just a group of parents from diverse backgrounds who were concerned, and this concern was born out of one, something I didn't even mention, the banquet. We normally hold a banquet at the end of the season. It's not a banquet. We're not teaching these kids how to really identify formality. People come in there with crux. The guys from the parks and recreations. People come in there with crux, the guys from the parks and recreations, they come there in shorts and T-shirts and flip flops and hand over these trophies. So how are these kids gonna learn? What do they, if, if you ask them what a banquet is, they would not tell you. Some of them almost come in their PJs, it's called a banquet. Charity begins at home, that's what my parents taught me. So it starts here, you have these three institutions here, none of them has a soccer program, uh, no. Uh, I stand to be corrected, SC State has a soccer program. Majority of the people who play in the SC State soccer program, I guarantee you are foreigners. There's diversity in Orangeburg, we're not tapping into that.
Okay, right. Thank you for that presentation, because, uh, you and I would play soccer from elementary school all the way to college. I played, uh, in my university too, so I played international, you know, soccer. Uh, thank you for the presentation, I hope I will receive more of the information from you in terms of soccer, because I'm, I'm a soccer enthusiast.
I'll be glad to, because it's a sport, but it's a multi-billion dollar, you know, generator, and it would do well for the city.
Uh, thank you, thank you, sir, for coming and sharing with us, but you said, these are your leaders?
Yes, sir, and those are the people we want to see.
Which one have you contacted with your issues?
With my issues? May I ask you a question before I answer your question, sir? Do you know me? I know you, I've had several conversations with you about the city.
Yo, but we got to move on, his time is up.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, your time is running, we'll get back with you, your time is running, thank you for the information. All right, our next person is Mrs. Brenda Jamerson and Mr. Henry Miller, the Samaritan House Coalition for Homelessness. Thank you, if you would come and state your name and your address, please.
My address, my name is Brenda Jamerson, three ninety-two Willer Road, Orangeburg, South Carolina. And please give Mr. Miller his own five minutes.
Yes, okay.
Good evening, Mayor Butler and council members and those assembled. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I come before you on behalf of the Coalition for the Homeless, that's why I come before you tonight. Around October twenty twenty-three, Reverend Jerry French, a Samaritan House board member, and Mr. Henry Miller, the Samaritan House Executive Director, appeared before council. Reverend French spoke on behalf of the Samaritan House regarding our concerns of a proposed city ordinance on loitering. We felt such an ordinance would have, had a drastic impact on the homeless population. We understand the concerns from businesses, homeowners, and the parents that loitering has on the community. At that time, Mr. French made the council aware that I would agree to spearhead an effort to form a coalition for the homeless in Orangeburg County and would bring back, back a report in future months. Such a report is being brought back tonight. Due to the length of the report, I will not go into details, but I have copied, given each of you a copy. The coalition was organized around November of December in two thousand and twenty-three. The coalition functions as a collective of diverse entities. It comprises members from various sectors of the community, united to advocate for, plan, provide, and assess homeless services, housing, and supportive services in the tri-county area. We have met several times since November as a group and separately as committees. The major agencies are entities, entities which play a vital role in treatment and supportive services to the most chronic individuals in the homeless population that you have seen on the streets or in public places that are not meant for habitation, are the Samaritan House for Shelter, DDSN, alcohol and drug abuse, mental health, and several Medicaid providers, including, including MUSC and Hope Health. Specifically, if these individuals need behavioral assessments or assistance. We have all met to include representatives from the Sheriff's Department and the Department of Public Safety. We have met together to address the issues of the homeless. Other lead agencies and community leaders have met in committees as well to address the issues of the homeless, to discuss the root causes and recommend solutions. Our collective concerns and preliminary solutions and recommendations are included in the written document. In summary, our report is appealing to the local government, city and county, to join forces with us and allocate the resources required to implement comprehensive programs that address the root causes of homelessness and provide immediate relief to those in need. Our agencies during this process have streamlined in some instances our processes and accommodations to address the homeless issues. We have found we cannot do it alone. The Samaritan House is the only shelter, and ninety-five percent of the time, we are at maximum capacity. Consider turning around a mother and her children with no place to stay. A senior citizen like myself, who is on crutches, who's in a wheelchair, you know, who has no medicine and have to turn them around. Our other agencies or entities do not provide inpatient care. Funding is limited and the staffing capacity is already on overload. Collectively, we have found that funding will be necessary for a long-term impact, that a loitering ordinance that will require a jail sentences is not the answer. That continuing to kick the can down the road, shuffling the homeless from one corner of town to another or from the city to the county jurisdiction or vice versa, will not solve the problem. Businesses understandably have concerns, we invite them to join us at the table. A fundamental shift in our collective mindsets, a recognition of the inherent dignity and worth of every individual, regardless of their housing status, is the only answer. Thank you for your attention, and we look forward to being, to be invited to your tables of decision-making to collectively work together.
Thank you, Ms. Jamison.
Any questions?
Ms. Jameson, I don't have a question, but I would just like to commend you all on how well this Samaritan House is running.
Thank you.
And how we have committed ourselves to doing what we can to help you continue to help our homeless population.
We appreciate that.
Thank you so much. Mr. Miller, you got your own five minutes. Mr. Miller, for some of you that don't know, is the director of the homeless shelter.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Butler, City Council, City Administrator Sidney Evering, and everybody. I want to first thank you for your support and funding with the new beds that we have at the facility. You know, bringing on those new beds allowed us to bring in additional fifteen residents, where in the past, we could house forty residents, and now we are able to house fifty-five residents. Thirty-one on the men's side and twenty-four on the women's side. And currently today, as of right now, we have fifty-three residents in the shelter, with three of them being children. With that being said, the Samaritan House is in immediate need of a, of its IT replacement equipment. You know, currently, we have five desktops and one, all-in-one computer. And in the past month, we've had two computers that have crashed, where we've lost data, um, important data for HUD to be able to help the residents of the Samaritan House. So we are asking for some help with funding to be able to get new computers to keep our facility running. And that is all, I didn't need the five minutes. Any questions?
Any questions, comments?
No, I know you said that, uh, you've lost some of your information.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you do a backup?
No, and that's part of the new plan, is to get a server to be able to back that information up.
Get someone who can help with that. So do you keep that information? Okay, all right, thank you.
Any, anybody have any questions for Mr. Miller?
I just have a comment. Uh, Mr. Miller, about sixty-eight percent of the cities in the United States, addiction is the number one cause of homelessness. Um, what program do you have in the Samaritan House for addiction?
So, so we partner with, um, the William J. McCord Center. So when a resident has an addiction, we, uh, we got the resources to get them to the, to the facility to be able to work on that addiction.
Okay, so you're working with the Don Center?
The Don Center.
All right, thank you.
Y'all have any questions, not, Ms. Williams? Okay.
I'd just like to say thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
We are lucky to have you at Samaritan House.
Thank y'all.
Thank you so much. And I think the Samaritan House Board is here, we're gonna ask them to stand, the board.
Yeah.
Let's give them a hand, they work so hard. And we have Ms. Tammy Wilder in the back, stand up, Ms. Tammy, she works so hard too. Okay, thank you so much. Uh, Claflin University Chief Williams is coming to talk to us about the closing of Golf Avenue from Clark Street to Magnolia Street. And while, while, uh, Chief Williams is coming, we're gonna, we're gonna acknowledge our president here, President Dr. Womack. Certainly glad to see you today, yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
And honorable council members, Mr. Evering, and everyone that is here and that is listening in via Facebook. I stand before you today on behalf of our president, Dr. Dewan Womack, and the Claflin community to reaffirm our unwavering commitment to ensuring the safety of both our campus community and the broader neighborhood. As an integral part of the city, we recognize the importance of managing the roadway in a manner that prioritizes safety while fostering respect and partnership for our neighbors. Our university has always placed the safety and well-being of our students, faculty, and staff, as well as visitors, at the forefront of our priorities. We understand that the management of the roadways surrounding our campus directly impacts lives of not only our campus community members, but also our neighbors. Therefore, we approach this responsibility with the utmost diligence and care. We understand that maintaining positive relationships with our neighbors is essential for fostering a harmonious and thriving community. As such, we pledge to conduct all road management activities with respect, transparency, and sensitivity to the needs of those living and working within the vicinity. I assure you that Claflin University remains steadfast in its commitment to managing the roadway in a manner that ensures the safety of all while honoring the spirit of collaboration and partnership with our neighbors. Together, we can create a safer and more cohesive community for generations to come. I thank you for this opportunity to come back before you again as we continue to make our requests for the closure of Golf Avenue. And we thank you for your attention and continued support. And I'd like to yield the rest of the time to one of our students.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Honorable members of the City Council, I am Arden Promis Joseph. I'm a sophomore majoring in Mass Communications with a minor in Criminal Justice, currently attending Claflin University. I currently hold the position of SGA Treasurer. Two weeks ago, I stood before you to express the urgent concerns regarding the perilous state of Golf Avenue and its devastating impact on our local college campus. Since my last address, thankfully, incidents of criminal activity have abated, likely due to spring break. However, we must be proactive rather than reactive. We can, we cannot wait and continue to witness brazen acts of car, uh, car break-ins, gunfire erupting dangerously close to our dormitories, and unauthorized individuals freely entering our campus grounds due to unrestricted access provided by Golf Avenue being public. I reiterate, I am a sophomore. I ask you, when will you prioritize the safety of our campus and our students? At Greek convocation, Dr. Doctor said, "Your parents did not send you to school to pay the ultimate price." So I ask you, why should we continue to be at the risk of paying the ultimate price? Our students, faculty, and staff live in a state of constant apprehension and fear. The sanctity of our college campus, once a beacon of learning and community, has been shattered by the relentless onslaught of criminal elements exploiting the vulnerabilities of our neighborhood's infrastructure. Once again, I am a sophomore. The gravity of the situation cannot be overstated. Lives are at risk, and the very foundation of our educational institution is under siege. It is imperative that we, as a collective body, prioritize the safety and security of our community above all else. Did I mention that I'm a sophomore? I implore the City Council to hear our desperate plea for assistance. We implore you to take decisive action without delay. The time for deliberation has passed, now is the time for swift and resolute action. The safety and well-being of our students, faculty, and staff hang in the balance, and we cannot afford to falter in the duty to protect them. I am a sophomore who deserves to become a junior one day. Thank you for the attention to this urgent matter. We urgently, uh, anticipate your decisive, your decisive response and stand ready to collaborate in any way necessary to restore peace and security in our community.
Are there any questions, counsel, or comment?
Uh, this is the police chief. Two weeks ago, when you came here, I made a comment, uh, in terms of, uh, question and recommendation. In terms of easement, because there are three property owners, the Lawrence, the Glovers, and then the Muddocks. I said, what do you have, what plan do you have for easement for these, um, property owners around that area? And you say you're going to provide one. Then the second thing that I asked was, um, to have a meeting with the property owners. And also, the third one was to involve the district, uh, representative, which is, uh, a sister of, uh, my comrade, in the plan of that area. So I was to get some more information and also to pierce the minds of the property owners around that area. I don't know whether you did it or not.
No, sir, uh, and I did not realize, uh, my apology, but I did not realize that, that, that we had a, a timeline of, between that meeting and this meeting to make that happen. My, our intent as a university, uh, is to address these issues uh, and make sure that, that we are communicating with the community, uh, with those individuals that are there. Uh, you've, you've said a third property owner, and, you know, so I, I would stand corrected on that. Um, I was only aware of two, but if there are three, then we would, uh, we would communicate with those three. And we would keep them apprised of, of what those, uh, plans would be in terms of, of access, the easement as, as, as you recall, referred to it. Um, so that's, that's what the plan would be, sir. So they would be involved, uh, and have knowledge of what's going to take place. And we would make whatever decisions, uh, is, that's going to be best for both them and for the university.
Have there been a meeting since you appeared here at the last time?
No, ma'am, there has, again, did not, did not know that it was necessary to have a, a meeting with them, uh, since the last two weeks.
Yeah, in that area, okay.
Let me ask you something, you planning on putting a gate on Magnolia and one down by Clark Street, the two gates?
Yes, sir, I think ultimately, we, we will, and there's still discussion about it. And there are so many opportunities, uh, to, to do this, but, uh, ultimately, we would want to have some type of closure at each end. Um, so the closure at Clark Street would allow folks who are coming off of Clark, Clark Street to make a left and go down toward Buckley, down toward, um, um, Chestnut. Yeah, go down toward Chestnut. If they make a right, then they would be coming into, uh, what will be, uh, the property that, that we're asking to be turned over to Claflin, and we would have, you know, some type of, uh, of, of access control there.
Okay, well, um, the only people becoming the gate would be like the law enforcement and those people that live there, is that correct?
Uh, again, yes, sir, uh, all, ultimately, that is, is what we want to be able to control who comes through that gate and at what time. and at what time. There have been discussions about having the gate open for free access during periods of time. None of that has been solidified as, as we stand here today. What we want to do is we want to capture the opportunity to be able to control what comes through there, and especially at night, because that is one of the major times. If you recall the videos that we showed, that, that was at night. There was not one that we, that we presented that was a daytime issue. So it may be that, that at, at a certain time at night, they're closed, but whether it is emergency services, or fire, law enforcement, or the, the neighbors who live there, there will be provisions that they have access to that, that, that stretch of roadway without being impeded.
Well, I want to see all your kids, when they come, my kids, the grown-up kids, when they come, like you've become a junior, I want to see you graduate and go home safe.
Yes.
Like you came to Orangeburg, that's my concern.
Yes.
Is the students go home safe.
Yes, sir.
And they're safe in Orangeburg, that's my main concern.
Yes, sir.
Please make the council aware, how many families are we talking about? I know, but make, let us make sure that the council knows how many families are being aware, making aware of this, coming and going, if, when they do this.
To my knowledge, Councilwoman Kit, there were two, the Glovers and the Murdochs.
Two families.
Now, if they're made, so, Councilwoman.
It's only two.
Yeah, we've, yeah, we've purchased the, the house that was owned by the Lawrence.
So is it, it's just one?
So it's, it's two.
Two families.
So, so what, what I, what I shared two weeks ago still stands.
Okay.
And I, I just, I just want to say something, I mean, because Claflin is my school, I graduated from Claflin, and without Claflin, I wouldn't even be anything, wouldn't even be sitting here. I just want to say this, I came here from Atlanta, Georgia. I was seventeen years old when I came to Claflin, and, and times wasn't as bad as it was then, as it is now. But the times have gotten very bad. You hear shootings all over the world and killing all over the world, universities, universities all over. If you watch the news, you hear people getting killed, getting shot everywhere. We can't take a chance with this. This is serious. These are people's children, they are, they want their children safe. Those of you that have children in here, you want your children safe. You want them to leave your house and come back and be safe, and we want to give them, these children, the same respect. It touched my heart when you said, I want to be a, a junior, I want to be a junior. Life is serious. You can't take this for granted. It happens quick, it happens in the blink of an eye. And I am fully in support of safety for the children.
Thank you, sir.
Amen.
Any other question? Thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm sorry.
You want to say something?
Uh, yes. Chief Williams, let me ask this question. Since your last appearance before council, I've had numerous folks, some that are affiliated with my church that live in that area, and they have informed me that they were not informed or had any contact with anyone from Claflin University as it relates to the meetings or anything of that nature. And if I heard correctly, when Dr. Kalu asked the question, you said that you were unaware that you needed to start that particular part of the process, did I get that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Kalu spoke about the last two, what occurred during the last two weeks.
Okay.
And my, what I, I responded to was that if there was an expectation of Claflin to have meetings during the, the last two weeks, I was unaware of that.
Okay. My next question or concern, with that said, and you have, as I stated earlier, numerous individuals who live in that area that have expressed, not just Ms. Murdoch, but other folk, that have said that they have not heard anything from the university. Would, wouldn't you think that before we move forward with this third reading, that you would at least try to put that in place so that you could actually hear from the property owners? Because they are property owners, and we just can't, and I understand the whole safety issue, because I too am a Claflin graduate, but that does not take away the fact that these are property owners, and you have to hear from them. And I'm sure, as they said, one of them said to me, and I'm not going to call her name, and she asked me not to, because she said she can speak for herself. That you have to allow these property owners to say and to feel whatever, whatever they need to say as relates to. And I think the ones that I spoke to, they were not in disagreement with what needs to happen, because they too are concerned about their safety as well as the students at Claflin University. I just think that some conversation needs to happen prior to the third reading of this ordinance. That's my take on that. And the next question that I have, sir, will additional, will additional Claflin security be provided for, as it relates to monitoring once the street has been closed?
Good evening, council. I want to address a, a couple of those. I want to, I think the perplexity of the amount of community members that are there, there was a prior to meeting months back when Mr. Evering asked South Carolina State, Claflin, and the neighbors, and we, we sent out a memo, and then there was a few folks that showed, and a few folks who did not show up for that meeting. And, but the folks from South Carolina State, Claflin, and former council member was there at that initial meeting, and we had a meeting to discuss this early. And then, but if there's a, outside of, as you said, numerous, there's only two properties that are impacted within that space. There's the Murdoch family, that, that home has been vacant for a significant amount of time, and Glover's been vacant for a significant amount of time. If there's other neighbors that you hope that we involve in that conversation, we're open to that, but we need to know who they are, because, so we can engage them in the conversation. But they're not directly impacted by it, because there's only two houses on that street outside of South Carolina State and Claflin that are properties that are not owned in that space.
Okay. I understand that.
Okay.
But as a property owner, they may not understand that. If you're talking about Clark Street, Golf Avenue.
Okay.
As far as they're concerned, they're going to be impacted.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm not a property owner in that particular area.
Okay.
So it would be my contingent that you actually involve those persons. If they're willing to show up at your next scheduled meeting and voice their concerns, then you all hash it out and do whatever you need to do. Because they too are concerned not about just the overall safety, okay? The safety of the students as well as the safety of the community.
Right.
And trust me, they are very, very adamant about the safety. For everybody involved, not just themselves, but the students as well. And they are, they are just elated that we have students here in Orangeburg and over in that area. So I would just like to see that happen, if it are possible.
And I just want to make sure we, because I wasn't here at the last meeting, we're able to do what you're asking for. And so if you can supply us with those individuals, because outside of that, you, we run the risk of going Lewis Dutton, Clark, Buckley, Jamison Pharmacy, we go, we go on and on and on, right? And so if you can give us some contextual folks who are interested.
I will, I will make sure that I have conversations with the individuals that reached out to me, and I will inform them, and matter of fact, I have your office number.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
And I'll make sure that they can reach out to you, and then you all can have your conversation and do whatever you need to do to make that happen.
Right.
Okay.
And yes, we will be investing in significant amount of security for that to happen. That is, as I stated my first time, that is my number one concern, right? Whether, whether, and I will say this very transparently, I live there, right? I respond back out when these things happen. I come out there and see the police officer. So it's not an if and, I, I lived, my daughter is there. I have a twelve-year-old daughter that lives in that community. And so for me, as our student clearly articulated, we've stated our point, right? And I, I will not, and I've said this before, and I get emotional about this, when I promise those parents at orientation, their babies are safe.
Right.
That, that blood is not on my hands, it's here for the council to make the decision. We've, we've shared what we share. Thank you.
Any questions for the president? On Claflin, thank y'all so much, we appreciate it. At this time, we have Mr. William Green to come and give us, give us your name, your address, and he's going to have some comments about Claflin closing Golf Avenue.
Good evening, mayor.
Can you pull your mask down so we can hear you?
Good evening, mayor, good evening, council. Somebody didn't get one. Everybody got one? You got one?
Didn't have enough.
I stand before you today, because I'm very concerned about what's going on on Golf Avenue. I don't feel that the leadership is right at Claflin University now, because when Tisdale was there, we didn't have all these problems. These problems not there. So the problem with Golf Avenue and the students at Claflin University is the lack of leadership. That's what the problem is, the lack of leadership. You cannot allow students to get in the middle of a public road, gyrating on top of cars, two hundred students in the middle of the road. I walk through there all the time. During the summer, when I want to get ice cream, I walk through there going to Jamison Pharmacy. I want to continue to be able to walk through there. I know several seniors that live on that street. I go visit them and check on them constantly. I've been knowing the Murdoch family for years now. I know their daughter. We're library friends, we met at the library here. It's just not fair to point the finger at taxpaying citizens of Orangeburg that home has been in their family for more than eighty years, pushing ninety years now. They should be allowed to have freedom to go eating off their property like they've been doing all these years, eighty-some years? That's based on unheard of, especially in the historical black community. And the home is in good condition. It's not falling apart or anything, but I know there is an alternative motive by Claflin University by doing this, and it's not fair to the citizens of Orangeburg. Students come, students go. Families in here for a lifetime, and it's not fair. And if anybody up there vote to close that road off, I think we really need to get out and vote and replace some of the amendments on the council. Because these are families. They've been here for a long time, eighty-some years, a home in one family? That's based on unheard of. Would any of you sitting up here want your road to be closed off? If you want to have a Christmas party, a birthday party, your friends and families can't come visit you? That's not fair. And nobody sitting up there would tell me that you would want to live in that kind of cage. That's like living in a prison. What changed between two thousand and nineteen and now? The leadership at Claflin University? Tisdale didn't have all of that. I walked through there. Like I say, two hundred students, a hundred-some students in the middle of Golf Avenue, gyrating on top of cars, hollering, screaming out of windows, using profanity, dancing on each other like they need a hotel room? It's leadership, it's the lack of leadership. I have one of the forms back there that you get from Public Safety. If you want to block a road off, have a party, a fundraiser, a parade, you have to get a paper from Public Safety and fill it out. So Claflin has been breaking the rules all these years, since Tisdale left, because they're not filling out these forms to be able to block the road off. That's a public street, it's an avenue. Why would you want to divert the traffic to Clark Street? Clark Street can't hold that traffic like Golf can. Golf is an avenue, it's wider, it can hold the traffic. If you block off Golf Street, then you got people driving through Clark Street. Can Clark Street hold that kind of traffic? No, it can't. Y'all really need to think and be considerate about the taxpaying citizens that vote you into office, because students don't vote. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Green?
Mr. Green, thank you for your presentation. What do you think in terms of safety? Do we have to wait until something happens before we put a get it community?
I can't, say it again?
Do we have to wait for something to happen before we can take action?
No, you don't have to wait for anything to, to happen. It's the leadership at Claflin University that needs to change. They need to crack down on that. If students are doing something that they're not supposed to do, what do you do with children? You scorn them and give them time to time out and give them time to think about it. If they having pop-offs, see, a lot of you up here by your age, you don't know the terminology of a jump-off and a pop-off. A pop-off, look at some of the movies. When somebody want to pop off, they acting vigilant, they want to shoot, they want to argue, they want to use profanity. That's what's called a pop-off, and they're allowed to call that a pop-off. It's not called a street party, a block party, it's called a pop-off. Pop-off means you popping off. They need, they need to take.
Mr. Green, your time is.
No, I want to, can I finish answering this question?
No, you had three minutes, you have to go sit down. Uh, he, uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Dr. Koo, did he answer your question? Because once you finish your three minutes, you ask questions, you go back.
But I wasn't finished.
Any other council member?
Mayor Butler. Mayor Butler.
You're telling, you're defining words to us.
Hold on a minute, hold on a minute. Mayor Butler.
Hold on, sir, I'm in charge of this council.
I understand.
And I'm the chairman of this council, and you have had your three minutes, and you have to take your seat.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you. Ms. Murdoch, at this time, would, would you come to talk about the closing of the, of the, and Ms. Murdoch of Golf Avenue?
To Mayor Butler.
Yes.
And the city council members, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to ask some questions for clarification. One, what type of notice was given to me about the closing of Golf Avenue? Was it by certified?
Pull your mic down so we can.
Bring it to the top of it. Yeah, you guys said.
I'll start again. I am here to ask some questions for clarification. What type of notice was given to me about the closing of Golf Avenue? Was it by certified personal mail or snail mail? Or what, and if so, what proof do you have? I want the record to reflect that I am objecting because proper notice was not sent to me. Number two, I want you to be clear, I object to the closing of Golf Avenue, but if you insist on doing this over my objection, I want the record to reflect that I want an easement to my property. There are less restrictive ways to close, to the closing of Golf Avenue. Number one, greater police presence. Number two, close the street only when you typically have problems. The pres, number three, the president can advise his students not to come out during these troubled times. Let's be clear, you're establishing a precedent that anytime the president of a university or college feels that's unsafe for his students to have, to have, I'm sorry, to feel it's unsafe for his students to come to a closed street, and you need to close the streets down, that is a problem. Because if you do so, you're unjustly discriminating against us to accommodate the college students. Let's be perfectly clear, again, the long-term goal is to take over the residence and the property of Golf Avenue. Any questions?
Do we have any questions, concern for?
I am an alumnus.
Come to that mic.
I am an alumnus of Claflin University, okay? We have been in possession of the property on Golf Avenue for some years, okay? And I have been on Golf Avenue recently. I have made. I have made observations on Golf Avenue. And I can tell you as much as you want to know about Golf Avenue in this area between Magnolia and Clark Street that you want to know. I want an easement from that property to wherever you end up. That's exactly what I am requesting. Are there any questions?
Thank you once again. I think you are just referencing to what I've said before. Because I don't want you all to feel that, you know, that the city or the school wants to use up your property because that belongs to you. But I heard the word easement, and I've used the word easement. And the school says they're going to provide easement to your property. That's the main thing there. And you agreed with me, both of you, that you, you know, you would like to have an easement to your property. And that that should be part of the plan for you to have an easement to your property. So, if that is not provided, then there is no plan. But they are forced to agree that they will provide that easement to your property.
You will never be kept away from your property.
But you have to.
Okay, but I'm not. You can go in and out when you get ready, as many times as you want to.
And my children.
Yes.
And my friends.
Yes.
And my relatives whenever they want to. But we might as well be clear, y'all. Let's not beat around the bush. Let's be for real. Claflin University wants Golf Avenue. They could care less about the easement or anything. Let's be for real now. Come on now.
No, Ms. Murdoch. We're not going to let them do that, Ms. Murdoch.
You can't stop. Why you gonna stop?
No, no. You're going to get in and out of your property. That's your property.
It's going to stay my property.
And when you get ready to go in there as many times as you want to, Reverend Murdoch want to go in there and meet, and anybody that goes in there will be able to go in and out of that property.
Yes, sir. And may I make a, may I make a clearance? President, the president said that my house has been empty for several months. He's wrong as rain. I told him that before. My daughter lived there until February. So, that's not several years. That's one month, okay? I want that on the record also, please.
But, Ms. Murdoch, we're not going to fight. We're going to make sure you have an easement to your house. We want you to have an easement to your house. And we want you and Reverend Murdoch to be able to go in and out of your house as much as you want to. That is your property. And we want to establish that here. That's your property. We are only asked after those people who go in there with those guns. We watched that on the film, and we saw those guys going there. We saw them start shooting. They could have shot you. They could have shot Reverend Murdoch. They could have shot anybody because those guns was going out like that. Now, we're not, you're going to go in your property when you get, when you, when you want to.
May I ask another question, please?
Let me finish. Nobody on this up here, up here, will, will, in our minds, they keep you from your property.
But may I ask a question? I have seen no evidence, and neither have you, that all the cars are from out the city. How do you know Claflin students weren't shooting? You can't prove to me it was city that Orangeburg.
Well, we got a good control of it. We don't have a control.
You better control the students then.
Anybody can go in and out, but we got to get a little control of it.
You can't control the students.
Just like they have the control of the front gate. But we don't, but I want you to leave here with this in your mind, you and Reverend Murdoch, if y'all would. We not after, we not after being mean to keep you out your property. We ain't going to do that. We don't, that's not going to be, that's not going. Now, we can go back. We can go back. And I, you know, I like to have a peaceful way about this because you don't have to be adversarial about this. We can go back and we can have a meeting, and we all can be there with the people that's concerned about it. And we can sit down and talk to them and let them know what is going on. Now, we can do that with it. It's because of other people. I know everybody down there. I know everybody. Everybody down there from, I know all of them. I know all of them.
Likewise.
Yeah. And so, well, we're going to have a meeting of peace so we can make sure that people understand that they're, that they're, that they can get in and out their property. Because I don't want you to say, whenever you want to go there, twelve o'clock at night, two o'clock in the morning, you can go in your property.
That's not right. Okay. Any questions?
Any questions? I want to say this too. I want to make a suggestion to the city council and Dr. Womack and Chief, Chief, both Chiefs. If we could put item number two on hold for old business until we have a meeting. And we have a meeting, and we call a meeting, and let us know we call a meeting. It's ways we can call a meeting because through the voter registrations office, we can get everybody that live in that vicinity. And this will satisfy everything. If they don't come, then they're not concerned. Just call a one-time meeting, and we can have it right there at Claflin somewhere. If we could, President, if that's fine with you. And we can satisfy this. Because we don't want to be, we don't want to be ugly, ugly with Ms. Murdoch and Reverend Murdoch as far as they're concerned. Because that house is, when I came to Claflin, her granddad, her dad, granddaddy had a store right there, and we used to go to the store. And, and, but I, you know, I just want, I just want us to do it peacefully so everybody can get their sayings out. Then we won't have to come back up here and say, "Somebody said, somebody called me." We can have everybody at the meeting, and then we can, we can get it out, if that's all right with y'all.
That's fine. That would work.
Go ahead.
Members of the council and Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we table item number two unto the council.
But y'all, please, hold up for a minute. You making the motion. Go ahead.
Unto the council and the school administrators, meet with the citizens of the Gulf area.
Second the motion.
Most have been made by Councilman Kalu and second by Councilman Kit, all in favor. Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion is carried. Thank you. Everyone have a peaceful togetherness. Amen.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I realize I did not sign up properly to speak.
Yes.
However, we have to be careful when we slam the rules. So, let's be careful how we speak about rules, about students, and about Claflin University.
Thank you.
Quite a bit of slander went on tonight. And let's make sure that we respect everybody.
That's right.
Everybody, not just the people.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Matters pertaining to Department of Public Utility?
None.
Mr. Mayor, there are no questions.
Okay. We have an executive session tonight. And in our executive session, we will talk about the performance and evaluation of the municipal judge section code, South Carolina code section thirty-four seventy-eight-one. And we will not be coming back out into, into open session. I would like to entertain a motion to go in the executive session.
Make a motion to go in the executive session.
And motion has been made by Councilman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Grievous, all in favor?
All right.
Motion is, eyes have it. Motion is carried. We want to thank Reverend Gainer for being here and Pastor Ray for being here and Pastor John for being here. Thank y'all so much for being with us tonight. And Reverend McCutches, my teacher, and Reverend Johnson for being here, Dr. Johnson and all of you. Thank y'all so much for y'all being here.